Next level.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. Thanks for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for December 16th, 2024. We have two items on our agenda this evening. The first is the entrance to Aspen pre-NIPA planning, and the second is a discussion around membership-based clubs and privatization of clubs. We're going to get right into our first item, which is entrance to Aspen. Jen, you want to introduce?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Jen Newton, Senior Project Manager for the City Manager's Office. With me is Carly McGowan, who's the Senior Project Manager in the Transportation Department, and Lynn Rumba, our interim Transportation Director. And then from Jacobs, Jim Clark, and Laura Meyer, and Doug Stremel. So we'll be kicking off this pre-NIPA kind of activity, which includes a review of the origin and destination study, traffic and safety analysis for the corridor, and stakeholder input. Essentially, this is an overview of the next few months, preparing for a new environmental impact statement process. Much of this presentation will be informative about the process that will be required to go through. So there's going to be a couple of questions. We'll bring those up on the screen when we get through a few of these initial slides, and ask you to keep in mind, as we go through the presentation, some of those questions. One of those is about stakeholder engagement in this pre-NIPA phase, and if we have the right folks that we're going to be asking to participate in some meetings. Just wanted to note that the EIS is a process that, through which a transportation project is developed, and it includes consideration of all the reasonable alternatives and their impacts. And so this is, if we go into a new EIS process, this will be an evaluation of all new alternatives, and essentially, it's starting over from a blank slate. So over the next few months, Jacobs will be leading this effort, which is pre-NIPA, and they're going to explain a little bit about all of these activities that would happen prior to decision whether to initiate a new EIS. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jacobs.
Thanks, Jen. So just to walk through our agenda, we're going to start with some updates on CDOT and FHWA coordination, going to go through some flow charts or decision trees. And the bulk of our presentation, as Jen mentioned, is to talk about this pre-NIPA process. Purpose and Need is a big part of that. There are different components of Purpose and Need development that you see here. Lastly, we're going to touch on what we see as a potential team structure in the event a new EIS is initiated, and open it up for council feedback and discussion. So in terms of CDOT FHWA coordination, you know, we're here in large part as a result of the resolution that council passed in September of this year, 2014-113, which directed staff to begin work on a new EIS or supplemental EIS. Around that same timeframe, September of this year, the city did receive a response letter to questions that staff had posed to CDOT and FHWA. And in that response letter, those agencies made clear, they reaffirmed that a new EIS would be required for either a three-lane shifted alternative or a split shot alternative, if those, either of those alternatives was intended to replace the PA, the entrance to Aspen preferred alternative. Yes, sir.
Question for clarification there. What about the... Does the preferred alternative need any EIS? I've heard, there's a couple of things. One is that we currently have, the rendering that we have for a preferred alternative is, shows a transit corridor, two bus lanes, two general traffic lanes, through a 400-foot cut-and-cover tunnel. I've heard different, talk about perhaps a 400-foot tunnel is not what would build, maybe it would be two hundred, two 200-foot tunnels. The depiction that we've been working off of has a transit corridor as part of the alignment, mass transit, the light rail, if you will. The language that we've been operating off of has been that we were looking for voter approval for the usage, for the interim usage of that light rail corridor or transit to be utilized for buses. So my question is, it sounds to me like the preferred alternative, as we've been presented it as it stands, kind of that we have iterations of, may need modification as well? Does the preferred alternative need to go through this EIS? For any changes that are made to it?
If there are changes to the preferred alternative, that was, then what's in the rod? And so my understanding of what's actually in the rod, and Doug, feel free to hop in, but it's as you described, Mayor Torrey, it's, it's two lanes in each direction, one for general purpose and one for, for bus. Or there, there are a couple of different typical sections, but the interim was always that there would be bus until light rail could be built. So the, the typical section that's shown does show an envelope for light rail, and the purpose of that is to allow construction of that light rail and allow those buses to still move while the light rail's being constructed.
I'll just add that all the typical sections need to comply with the rod widths that are in the rod document, and those are maximum widths. But we're here today to talk about a new, a new EIS that would start with a new, new process, so. But is that, to answer your question, those widths are defined in that rod?
Yeah, I was directly asking a question off of your bullet point number two that said that a new EIS is necessary for the three-lane shifted or split shot alternatives. And my question to you is, should the preferred alternative be in that bullet point as well? Because there's going to be some changes to the, the preferred alternative, or maybe it's not what's in the, anyway, that's my question.
That'd be like a new solution, then?
Yeah. I mean, in this case, if, you know, if the city, for example, wanted to move ahead with a split shot alternative, the record of decision goes away, there's a new EIS, and, and, you know, we'll have to see if that's the solution that comes out of that new EIS. So there, you know, there are a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about the PA and what that typical section is. One thing I would note is, when we were here this summer, you know, what we showed then was the slimmed-down interim version, which was a reduced typical section. So that didn't have that additional width for the light rail envelope. It just had the two lanes in each direction, one for general purpose vehicles and one for, for bus only. So that was a narrower width than, than what's shown.
The caveat to that, though, is through the cut-and-cover, where you wouldn't want to come back in and widen the cut-and-cover, so you would provide for it at that point. Does that make sense? You, you provide for that LRT width in, through that cut-and-cover, because it's such a permanent structure.
And the same with the bridge?
Yeah, although you could do a separate bridge.
But as I understand it, that the voters have approved the use of the easement for mass transit in the interim until light rail is either financed or accepted by the community?
No.
No. The voters have never approved that. In fact, that specific request was rejected in 2002. Is that right?
I think that's right.
Yeah. So the only approval of voters is for two lanes of traffic and a light rail corridor.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, thank you. It answers a little bit of it. I mean, it sounds like there's refinement to be done on the preferred alternative itself.
Yeah, I think it really depends on the direction that you, the, the city council wants to go if, you know, if, you know, the sentiment is not to pursue any sort of version of the preferred alternative, that's really where we would start talking about initiating a new EIS to study some of these other alternatives. And as Jen mentioned, study all quote-unquote reasonable alternatives. So it's a fresh look.
Okay.
So just to continue with CDOT FHWA coordination points, at the request of CDOT, we did have a meeting last month, and the purpose of that meeting, as CDOT expressed, was to get alignment on the process, if the city opts to initiate or propose to initiate a new EIS, and to establish what they deem to be EIS ground rules. They did express some concerns. For example, they expressed a concern about what they see as divided community sentiment about what to do there, here at the entrance to Aspen. And the FHWA staff did note that they've, you know, they've got some constraints on their staffing end. They did mention that they just hired a new area engineer that would serve CDOT Region 3, which of course Aspen's within, so that would help with their staffing needs. City staff posed the question about, in the event of a new EIS, what should be the extents or limits for, for the stakeholder and public outreach? And CDOT and FHWA did make clear that they expect, and it's appropriate, that Down Valley participation would be included. So they mentioned that the users of AD2 going in and out of Aspen originate, you know, for the, in, in a large measure from Down Valley, so they expected that outreach to extend down to that area. And lastly, CDOT staff mentioned that their ride-away team had requested some clarification from their Attorney General, the State AG's office, on different uses for the rural open space. The two key messages that came out of that meeting, number one, that CDOT and FHWA would need to agree that a new EIS is warranted, and that in turn would require what they described as a strong purpose and need that's backed up by the data. So what we'll be talking about in the next slides are, are, you know, attempts to really start forming that, that data-driven purpose and need. And secondly, we've, you know, they've said it before, and we've talked about it here during these council workshops, ultimately, CDOT and FHWA are the ultimate decision-makers during an EIS process. As mentioned, we're going to be talking a little bit toward the end about team structure, and, you know, as we're, as we'll talk about then, I think what's important to mention is that city staff, because the city would be self-funding a new EIS, would be at the table when those decisions are made. So more to come on that. So this flow chart shows generally the EIS process. We've shown versions of this before, so it might look familiar. One difference or distinction is this first pre-NIPA box, and of course, this is what we'd be spending time talking about, these different tasks. Couple of things I'll note. At the end of pre-NIPA, we envision coming back to you, council, with a draft Purpose and Need, getting your feedback on that. We do want some, some early feedback on, on your thoughts on that, but once it's refined, we want some, some feedback from council on the Purpose and Need. And at that point, we would be looking for council direction on whether council wants to start and then request initiating a new EIS, and that, of course, would come with a funding authorization. If the answer to that question is yes, then the key steps to the EIS process follow, and those, in short, are kind of a scoping process, where we go out to the public and agencies and get more feedback, we do data collection, we, working with FHWA, we issue what's called a notice of intent, and this is a key milestone, because this formally starts the EIS process. And it also starts the clock. There have been some NEPA regulation changes, really going back about four years, that require EISs to be done in two years. It's a two-year duration. And that is a large part why we want to do some of this front work, upfront work during this pre-NIPA process. It delays starting that two-year EIS clock. Next steps, you know, we'll be evaluating alternatives, screening them down. We'll be preparing a draft EIS statement, putting it out on the street for public agency comment, preparing a follow-up final EIS, which we hope to be combined with a record of decision, and the feds would issue that rod, and that ends the EIS process. And then we start the hard work of trying to get the, the project funding, identifying funding, going through final design, and going through environmental permitting. So.
Question there?
Yeah. If FHWA and CDOT decide that a new EIS is not warranted, irregardless of what's, this city council decides, their decision is final?
If a EIS is not warranted, if that's what their decision is? I think the short answer is yes. I mean, I think they, they, as we've talked about before, invested in the previous EIS, they invested in mitigation, including the land swap, and they feel that if the city can't demonstrate why a new EIS is warranted through a new purpose and need, then I think their, their default is to the record of decision and to the PA. I don't want to speak for CDOT and FHWA, but I feel confident that's their posture.
Thank you.
So on the, on the funding note, this slide just illustrates the main way that these types of projects are funded. And I, I think most of us know this. It's through the Intermountain TPR process for Aspen. There are other ways for projects to get funded. You know, the city could pursue discretionary grants. There might be federal earmarks. That's what kicked off that South Bridge project in Glement Springs. But for the most part, this is the way these projects are funded. And it really starts with bringing the process or the project to the TPR for prioritization, along with the many other, other regional priorities. And essentially, the TPR develops a four-year prioritized list. It's on a four-year cycle, and it was last updated this past August. And it's worth noting that the ETA project was not on the, the current prioritized list. But as part of that process, the next step is really advocating for the project to be included on that four-year fiscally constrained list. And if it is, as noted here in that first bullet in the second row or column, it would be added to CDOT's four-year list. It's called their statewide transportation improvement plan, or the STIP. ETA is not on the current TPR prioritized list, but it is on a larger list of un-prioritized, unfunded projects. Next. Okay, so transitioning to really the, the meat of our presentation, the pre-NIPA phase and Purpose and Need. Let's go to the next slide. So this is a preview of a slide that we'll be showing at the end in terms of council feedback requested, but bearing in mind that a new EIS would be a fresh look at the Purpose and Need and the transportation needs on the AD2 corridor around the entrance. You know, what, in council's view, are the needs that really need to be addressed? What are the goals and priorities related to that? And through the outreach activities that we're describing, are we doing outreach? Are we including the appropriate stakeholders? So again, more to come on that. So as noted, we'll be working to take a fresh look at Purpose and Need. That includes traffic and safety analysis, doing a stakeholder workshop, having a listening session with elected officials, and developing a public comment tool. So Laura will be, and Doug will be expanding on some of these things. Identifying reasonable project limits, what we call in the NEPA world, logical termini. Do we have reasonable limits for a transportation project? We'll be meeting with CDOT and FHWA really throughout the process, but we want their feedback as we go through it. And we want their feedback to determine whether the transportation needs that we've identified through these activities are reasonable. We, we want to have a gut check from those agencies on the Purpose and Need before we in turn come to you. And that meeting we envision to be in May timeframe of next year to, you know, after we have time, to synthesize the results of all the analysis and the feedback, and put it into a, what we have to be a concise Purpose and Need document to make sure it checks the box in terms of what you, council, are looking for. And if the answer to that is yes, then we'd be looking for council authorization to initiate an EIS. And, and in the event that that is done, then we would prepare what's called an EIS initiation memo. And that's really the formal thing that we will take to CDOT and FHWA, for them to approve, to say, yes, we're on board with the new EIS.
Is that also the decision point for CDOT FHWA to decide that one is not warranted?
That one is not warranted?
That a new EIS is not warranted.
It is, yeah. Yeah. That's when they could put their thumbs down, yeah.
On that note, is there any precedent for communities asking for a new EIS after having a PA? I mean, it's been, we're coming up on 30 years, or a couple of decades. Like, it seems, should be warranted automatically, in my opinion. So do you, do you know if this has happened before?
I have been doing this for a long time, as has Laura. I personally don't know of an instance where this has been done.
Do you know of other communities who have ignored their EIS for so long? Like, didn't put it in after, and waited decades? Or are we the unique snowflake that has just made this happen?
No, I know there's a project in Montana that we were involved in years ago, where because of a lot of public opposition, the project proponents and the project sponsors, which in that case was the Montana Department of Transportation, went back and based on the work they did with FHWA, FHWA opted to select the no-action alternative. So that was part of, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, so most communities actually implement the EIS that was approved, like, within a few years after it being approved?
Yeah, I mean, this is so unique, and that this is a last major phase for a rod that was approved almost 30 years ago. So that's, that's very unique. You know, in terms of initiating a new EIS, you know, a valid argument to be made is just for the passage of time, that the fact that this EIS and rod, it's been so long, that it requires a fresh look. So that would be one reason, and what we're hearing from the feds is they would also like to see some fresh, you know, a fresh look at the Purpose and Need.
That's good to hear, yeah. I'd hope so.
Yeah. So you know, why start these, these tasks before NEPA? You know, we, we do want to better define what this project looks like. We want to really think in terms of project limits, what are reasonable. You know, we appreciate that if a new EIS is, is... You know, we appreciate that if a new EIS is, is funded, it would be city-funded. So, you know, how far down valley should those limits extend? It's an opportunity, I think, with the outreach to build some consensus on, on a solid purpose and need and what to be prioritized. And as mentioned before, by doing these activities before we start the clock, it does allow us to, it puts us in better stead to meet that two-year duration that's required by the NEPA regulation. Okay, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Laura to talk more about purpose and need.
Okay, so purpose and need is really exactly like it sounds. It's establishing what the project sponsor wants to do and why. So in an EIS, this is really critical because it's the basis for both this building your reasonable range of alternatives. So it really guides what types of alternatives you are going to develop. And then it also is the basis for screening those alternatives to determine which alternative rises to the top. Next slide. So a little bit on FHWA's guidance about developing purpose and need, and I'll, I'll break this down a little bit. You know, the purpose really establishes what you want to achieve with the project. And the key to that is that you can't really dictate the solution in that statement. So just as an example, if a project sponsor had a purpose or a project where they wanted to replace or improve safety at an intersection or an interchange, they can't have a purpose statement that says, we want to implement a roundabout at this intersection to improve safety. You have to stick to the bigger picture outcomes that you're looking to achieve. You can't dictate the specific solution. So moving on to needs, if, if the purpose is the what, the needs are the why. So the needs are all of the, through your data collection and your stakeholder engagement, the transportation issues that you've identified in your project area. And that has to be backed up by data. So Doug will be hitting on that a little bit later. But the other component that you can include in purpose and need is some supplemental goals and objectives. And I think the original ETA purpose and need is a great example of that. You know, you had your primary purpose and need, which was very focused on congestion and safety. Go ahead.
The purpose and need from the original rod?
Correct.
Or is it, is the purpose and need for the EIS or for the rod? Or are those interchangeable?
It's the whole thing. So you would, you initiate your purpose and need at the start, when you initiate your EIS process, and it guides you all the way through to selecting a preferred alternative in the rod.
And then, well, two questions. I was, I was gonna wonder, can, does anybody have available the purpose and need as it was stated for the original rod or EIS?
We looked at that this afternoon.
And does this relate to that? Or is this a new start? This is a new purpose and need?
It would be completely fresh, and it would be based on the data gathering about the current issues in the corridor that should be addressed, based on input you get from the stakeholder group, based on input you get from the public. And you take a look at that collectively and say what, what really needs to happen in this corridor.
I will say that a lot of the work that we've, you know, brought to you during these workshops back in May, and then again, earlier, later the summer, will inform that new purpose and need. For example, we did the traffic model. We presented the results from our B-SIM traffic modeling. You know, that's gonna be a great tool to, to look at some of the transportation needs on the corridors, particularly with regard to future traffic, right? And also some of the information that we did for the, the infrastructure, for example, the bridge and the S-curves, I think can inform that, that new look at the, the purpose and need.
Thank you.
So a last piece of FHWA guidance on purpose and need is that it, it needs to be very digestible by the public. So there can be a lot of technical information that goes into purpose and need. You have an entire chapter in an EIS that's devoted to that. But what we also do is we develop a very short, concise statement of the purpose and need that is very readily understandable to the public. So that'll be part of the process. Next slide. So one of the early efforts in kind of establishing a fresh purpose and need is taking a look at the planning context that you're working in. And so that involves taking a look at all of the adopted public planning documents in the area that have gone through a public process and have established goals and objectives that may be relevant to this project. So I've got a list of some of the plans we looked at, but I'll, before we go to that slide, I'll highlight some of the key themes that we saw when we looked at some of the local, regional, as well as the statewide plan through CDOT. So first is, you know, providing safe and efficient mobility options. That was really something that came through in a lot of plans relative to transportation. And a lot of jurisdictions seem to recognize that they would need to lean on transit in order to accomplish that. There was some recognition that, you know, the roadway infrastructure cannot handle every single person taking every single trip in their own personal vehicle. And so, you know, not only that, but just parking limitations are especially relevant in these areas. So there was a lot of emphasis on expanding access to transit and active transportation. So improving bike ped connectivity is a means to essentially accommodate projected growth. The other key theme that I saw a lot was maintaining that quality of life and rural character in the mountain towns. So next slide. So these are the plans that we took a look at. Some were more relevant than others. A lot of the down-valley kind of local jurisdiction plans really focused on very localized transportation issues. So not quite as relevant, but when looking at the Aspen area community plan, the EOTC plans and the RFTA plans, there was certainly a lot of discussion that would be relevant to, to this corridor. Next slide. So one of the strategies that I mentioned that we would use to try to establish what needs need to be addressed in the corridor is to get the public's perspective. The example on this slide is from a recent Jackson Hole public engagement effort. And it's an interactive map where folks can get on there and, you know, choose one of the issues there. In the lower left, a specific type of issue that they see on a corridor, and they can drop a pin in the map at a specific location and leave a comment about a transportation need or issue. So this is a really, you know, quick and easy way to get input on what the public is experiencing and what they think the needs are in the corridor to inform the purpose and need for the project. And it doesn't replace, you know, the future public engagement that's required. That's required during the NEPA process. So we would still be, if we went forward into a NEPA process, be developing an engagement plan and conducting public meetings to get public input. But this is a great example of a tool that we've used on, on other projects to, you know, get quick feedback and, and help us inform the purpose and need.
So both Jim and Laura touched a lot on purpose and need and the importance of that for FHWA and CDOT. So the Jacobs team's gonna be doing an existing conditions assessment. And first off, we're gonna look at safety data. So basically, within the study area, where are the reoccurring crashes occurring? And we'll take a look at those crashes over like the last five years. We're also gonna look at what types of crashes they are, whether they're runoff the road, rear end, or side swipe. Because I'll touch on that, why that's important here in a second. As well as, we're gonna look at the crash severity, whether it's just property damage or if it's a severe crash. And we usually use a KABC scale for severity, K being fatal and C being just a complaint of an injury. So there's different levels of crash severity. So we'll take the crash data that's assembled and, and we'll develop a hotspot analysis. Basically, this is plotted on a map, similar to the map that's shown on the slide here of, of the Jackson Hole project. Basically, it's gonna, the, the red areas and orange areas are gonna be areas of potential countermeasures. So basically, where improved safety can be offered up. And that's through maybe a design change or mitigation. So the type of crashes might help form what mitigation we need. If we're, if we're seeing a lot of side swipes in an area, that might lend itself to, well, maybe there's a merge happening here or an auxiliary lane is there and there's, there's a problem with the design or a, a problem with too, maybe too much congestion. That could be symptomatic of maybe a lot of rear ends occurring. We're also gonna take a look at the infrastructure data. Basically, in what condition is the roadway and bridges? Where are problem areas that affect or could affect the highway users? We're gonna also look for the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity gaps and, and where we might need to provide additional sidewalks or even sidewalk widths. Also take a look at the roadway geometrics for the, for the highway design speeds. Are the shoulder widths appropriate for breakdowns? Is the superelevation and cross-slope correct for the, the curvature of the road or, or drainage? And also take a look at intersections and the side distance related to safety at those intersections. Also, what infrastructure is nearing end of life? Well, we did get a fair condition on the Castle Creek Bridge, so that's great for now. But there might be other infrastructure under the highway or over the highway that we need to take a look at and see what age that is. What are the needs for emergency evacuation and/or redundancy for this town? So that's been an important topic for this town. So that'll be part of the need assessment as well. And as Laura alluded to, we're gonna engage the public through that online map tool, basically soliciting the virtual feedback of known issues within the study area. So we're, we're gathering data, but we also want the public to bring us data as well. Additionally, we'll, we'll take a look at the traffic data. Where are the traffic problems? Well, in the summer, we did do that traffic study and, and we did note some of those pinch points that are, that are problematic. So we'll, we'll look again at that, those needs there. We also want to look at the vehicle mix that's coming into Aspen. Are the SOVs or HOVs, or is there a lot of service trucks coming in, or is there transit? Because there, these could also help inform maybe other TDM measures that might be needed. And then also, from where are most trips originating? So we're gonna, we've already started the, actually, the origin destination study. And this is gonna be a regional study because there's a lot of commuters that come in from Eagle County and Rifle. So we're taking a look at who those users are.
In, in, in what respect? The studies that I've seen over the years, whether it's the preferred alternative or other alternatives, indicate that actual commute times, maybe a minute, maybe two minutes. So how, how do you mean, how, how does, how does that figure into the regional?
So more, more on a percentage basis, you know, what percentage is coming from this distance out? Or what percentage is coming from this? And, and what's, what does the whole picture look like, really? How important is this corridor to those users? If, if there's a high percentage, then it's really important. If it's a lower percentage, maybe less important, but still important. So mainly from a percentage standpoint.
And, and similarly, a percentage of improvement or change of condition?
Percentage of users, really?
Yeah. Okay. I'll have comments at the end. Thanks.
So in addition to the needs we're gonna be gathering and the public's gonna be offering, we're gonna reach out to, we're gonna hold a stakeholder workshop to gather additional needs. So basically, the purpose there is validate the research on transportation needs for the state highway age-two corridor that we've identified. And then we'll solicit input from the stakeholder workshop, at the stakeholder workshop. We'll also identify supplemental project goals that might be needed for the project. And the participants will be local and down-valley participants. So mainly technical staff from those agencies, local, state, and regional. And we've, we've put on here a, a great representation of who we think should be involved in the stakeholder workshop. But we're open to your input at the end of this slide presentation and, and, and see if there needs to be any changes. So the workshop, the location is still TBD. We're still working that out. But the timeframe of the workshop is kind of in that February to March timeframe, so maybe late February or early March 2025. We're also going to convene an elected officials' listening session. Basically, the purpose of that is to report out on the pre-NIPA task and activities and to also listen to you and the other elected officials on what are appropriate project limits, as well as needs and goals. And then also, the participants of that will mostly be the elected officials in the upper valley. So City of Aspen, Pittkin County, and Town of Snowmass Village.
So I mentioned earlier, we'd be talking about a potential team structure in the event of a new EIS. And this is something that we assembled and did vet with CDOT, and they thought it was generally reasonable. It's structured largely off of the team structure we used successfully on the Grand Avenue Bridge project. And just to walk through this and start down in the middle with the project leadership team, this is our main stakeholder group. It's multidisciplinary in, in nature. It's comprised of stakeholders from different interests along the 82 corridor, within the, the limits. And, you know, in that area, we could envision stakeholders from the open space, environmental communities, from aesthetic design interests, transit, for example. And it was to the PLT or the project leadership team, you know, whenever there was major work products, the project team would take it back to the PLT, solicit and get feedback. And then in turn, take that back to the project management team. This is a smaller group. This is up top. This is the, this is where decisions are being made. So it's CDOT, FHWA. And notably, the City of Aspen, we feel, would be at the table and probably Pittkin County staff as well, knowing that, you know, portions of the study are, are within their jurisdiction. And so this is where the decisions are discussed, made. Ultimately, of course, as mentioned before, CDOT and FHWA are the ultimate decision makers. But I think, you know, what we wanted to point out is we do envision city staff being at the table. Issue task forces down at the bottom are convened as needed as specific issues arise. They tend to be for the beefier issues. For example, I could envision an issue task force surrounding transit, perhaps around aesthetics. I know on the Grand Avenue Bridge project, we had an issue task force related to bridge aesthetics, for example. And they in turn would take the results of that particular issue back to the PLT and to the PMT for, for their, for their input in decision-making. Next slide. Okay, so this is the slide that we presented before, but just wanted to open it up to, to council feedback. You know, given what we shared in terms of what that pre-NIPA process would look like and specifically what the purpose and need development would look like in terms of the data gather, data gathering activities, the outreach. What do you, as council, feel are transportation needs that, that should be addressed through a new EIS process?
Great. Thank you. All right, I'll start with some council input. I have a couple of notes from a council member that's not here, and I've got my own. So we'll just start. Questions or input?
Yeah, input. So most of my comments right now, because I pre-prepared them from the PAC era, what are your goals and priorities related to the entrance to Aspen? And I can email them to you, too. I have them all written down since.
Sure.
Slow down. First and foremost, better traffic flow. A traffic flow with no use or limited use of open space, including Merle Thomas and the golf course. None or limited disturbance to neighbors of any potential highway widening or expansion. Better understanding of where bus stops will be, as Ethan Hallam is currently the second busiest stop in the city. None or limited traffic lights at Seventh and Main Street or an intersection with Cemetery Lane. Sufficient wildfire evacuation is vetted by experts. Better public transportation flow, better traffic and public transportation flow down-valley from the bridge as well. A traffic flow that limits the sneak of cars through the neighborhood streets of the West End. Like comments like, if we have two bridges, there needs to be a plan, financial and otherwise, as to the maintenance and upkeep of the bridge, that the city will take over. A traffic flow that's not, that does not. A traffic flow that's not, that does not send more cars through the roundabout. A traffic flow that is safe for bicyc- bicyclists and pedestrians. Does not cause parking problems downtown. Maintains Aspen's small-town character. Future potential for future public transportation such as trackless tram or light rail that is not cost efficient or feasible now. And then bottom line, if you're going to use the Merle open space, then it better be a massive improvement to our community versus the preferred alternative as currently proposed that solves very li- uh, limited problems while creating a ton more problems. For all the faults of our council, I'm proud to be on a council that moved towards a solution to this crucial issue when it should have been, um, the EIS should have been done the last time the PA was shot down in two thousand and one. We need a plan and to establish that whatever the EIS produces is what we will live with as this solu- this solution will be vetted to be deemed the best possible outcome. Given all the constraints and desires of our community, we cannot do this EIS and then wait for the bridge to fall below fare or for too many years to pass where this becomes another divisive and unproductive issue for our community. Um, and then lastly, related to this but unrelated to the EIS process, we also, as a community, can't add so much growth that we solve these problems short term just to add lanes and thus more cars to the road and end up solving nothing at all. That's my comprehensive overlook. And then, as far as including the appropriate stakeholders, Town of Snowmass Village, Picking County, and us seem like, um, the most appropriate stakeholders for this. But I do encourage down valley input as they do use the bridge. But I do want to acknowledge the open space is the City of Aspen's. It is ours, and that's why we're voting on it. And that's why, um, we are the main and primary stakeholder for that piece of property.
Thank you. Others ready, John?
Yeah, I'll go next. What transportation needs should be addressed and goals and priorities are pretty similar for me. I, I think our traffic issues are valley-wide. And when I sit in traffic down valley trying to get back up valley, I can't help but think we need, uh, an alternative to get people out of their cars. And so that's why I've, I've always supported a second bridge just because we need better evacuations in case of wildfires, which are getting bigger, more unpredictable, and more frequent. We also, again, public transportation should be prioritized, and I, I want to make sure that the, uh, light rail stakeholder is, is kept in place because I think there will be a need for that at some point in the future. So I support this, uh, this process moving forward, and, um, we'll, we'll look forward to hearing back from you.
Thanks, John. Ward, input on these questions?
Yeah, I The one aspect that I really like about the preferred alternative is the elimination of the traffic from Cemetery Lane to the roundabout. I think that will have a substantial impact on the West End creep, and I think that's, uh, should be a goal of any new entrance to Aspen is to, to mitigate the traffic that goes through the West End every evening. And i- as long as that section of road is in place, people aren't doing the power plant road, go up to Cemetery Lane, take a left and take a right to go down valley. The preferred alternative of the four that were pr- presented in the survey is the only one that eliminates that section of road. So is a, uh, a need to be addressed is to, uh, to decrease the amount of traffic going through the West End every evening. Wildfire, um, egress and access are, uh, really important to me. I, I think that, um, you know, I have a question, I think I know the answer to this, is that we're including a lot of stakeholders up and down the valley. You know, what's the bias going to be? And I'm assuming that, uh, CDOT and FHWA will determine how much weight to put with those, from those different communities. The, um, the amount of traffic disruption during the construction of the ETA is really important. If it's going to be a four-year project with substantial, uh, traffic delays, um, th- that needs to be addressed. I, it, mass transit, I, I, I mean, we talk about bus lanes, but I think bus and enforced, uh, HOV lanes should be, um, part of the solution. The more people we can get out of, uh, out of vehicles, single vi- some, single occupancy vehicle decrease is, uh, in the, the better, um, needs, uh, of the community will serve the community better. Uh, the fewer single occupancy vehicle trips there are. I, I think the realization also that we're, no ETA is going to, um, give free-flowing traffic. It's just not going to happen. None of the studies, I think, indicate that we're going to see, uh, fifty percent degree, decrease in time from the airport into town, regardless of which, uh, ETA is chosen. I would love to see a light rail, but I don't think it's economically feasible. Some kind of, uh, mass transit is, is absolutely necessary. And for me, uh, four lanes, uh, two of mixed traffic and two for HOV slash bus, um, are, are a, a must for me. And appropriate stakeholders, I think everybody should be listened to up and down the valley. But ultimately, it's the, um, it's the City of Aspen that is the most directly affected. But I know that FHWA and CDOT are going to listen to everybody. And as you've pointed out, it's their decision. It's their, their road, and if they decide they're going to go with a preferred alternative, that's what's going to happen. And then the health of that bridge, uh, might, uh, accelerate the use of the preferred alternative.
I think that was, um, those were my comments.
Thanks, Ward. Uh, I'm going to share, uh, Bill Goose's comments that he sent to me in an email. So you have those. Regarding the EIS scoping, um, prioritizing the safety and longevity of the existing bridge. So, um, a, a top priority is to maintain access, safe access, um, no matter what direction we go. I'm just going to kind of read them off. An acknowledgement that the current version of the preferred alternative was not acceptable to three out of five current council members, but more reflected by over fifty percent of Aspen voters that rejected it. Traffic flow for regular vehicles needs improvement. The entrance to Aspen should be studied in tandem with the Greater Highway eighty-two traffic flow improvements in concert with county and state. Maintain Aspen's small-town character. It's okay for a slower inbound traffic, uh, adjusting to in-town speeds. Safe pedestrian bicycle routes. Protects residential neighborhoods to the maximum extent possible. Protects critical open space to the maximum extent possible. No routing. Avoid the routing of Cemetery slash McLean Flats traffic into town to get out of town, which is, uh, a feature of the preferred alternative. No additional traffic lights, which is a feature of the preferred alternative at Seventh and Main. And final bullet point, cost-effective solution. Those are from Bill. Then I want to just take a moment and share kind of my input and my view on this, addressing the, kind of the whole presentation this evening. The reason that we're here is because of that failed vote so many years ago that sought to, uh, give the authority for rubber tire solution buses in the interim over the Merle that did not pass, right? And it was a close margin, but it didn't pass. For me, that says, from the community, that they are looking for a, a better alternative than that. And there's many different reasons. Some people didn't like the disturbance of the Merle open space. Some people don't like, uh, a tunnel as an entrance. Some people realize that we're talking about one-third of a mile that won't have greater impact on traffic and general vehicles and stuff like that. So a, a, a variety of reasons. The reason that I supported getting this back to an EIS is, is for, for those same reasons in combination. I looked at, I looked at the community's disagreements with the preferred alternative as we've been presented it and looked for other solutions that can mitigate for those concerns. That's why I, I've, of, of recent been advocating for more study on the modified split shot. And I want to thank you guys for, um, the help that you've given us in refining that, but we need more. We went out to a survey recently, and, um, that as an alternative, it didn't have detail around the intersection with Cemetery Lane. It still had the traffic light at Seventh and Main, which, um, there have been, uh, split shots that have been rendered that do not have a traffic light there. So there, there needs to be some more refinement to the modified split shot. Again, I, I only want that looked at as a viable alternative because it addresses some of the concerns that people had with the preferred alternative. New to it, and there's, there's been work done on that split shot or modified split shot, which stays along the current alignment longer than going across the Merle. There's been some work around that, and, um, I think it's improved. It's gotten some attention, and it's improved over the last even six months or a year, as we look for those better solutions. So for me, um, the transportation need that needs to be addressed, would be mass transit and bus lanes, dedicated bus lanes. The problem with that in this is that we're talking about a third of a mile from the roundabout to Main Street. A third of a mile that on the inbound direction, um, Raft, word from Rafta direct- directors has been that, that's not that big of an issue because once you hit Main Street, that, the traffic congestion is alleviated. So even in current configuration, after the roundabout, inbound buses don't see too much delay. Outbound, obviously, they get stuck on Main Street and Main Street traffic. However, they have a bus lane for the majority of that. So, uh, the need that needs to be addressed is getting single occupant vehicles off the road as much as possible. If that means mass transit, then that is supportive of mass transit. Goals and priorities related to the entrance to Aspen. My number one is a solution that really fits the community. Community character is one way to say it, but, um, just fits the community's values a little bit more. You know, again, I, I think that we're talking about such a small segment from the roundabout to Main Street, and a lot of people are really putting a lot more hope on this than, um, than maybe the impacts that we've seen through studies can really be rendered through this. So, so I think people need to have a real, um, realistic view of what this section of roadway can and cannot accomplish. Goals and priorities related to the entrance to Aspen. For me, again, my number one thing is I don't think that a traffic light is appropriate at Seventh and Main. I think that will add more delay, not less. I think there are two, um, multifamily buildings on two of the four corners that would be a traffic light there. I don't think that is an interruption that we should bring to that. So for me, I, I would, my goal and priority is to get rid of the traffic light at Seventh and Main. The second one would be to avoid the, the tunnel. A tunnel entrance into the City of Aspen, when it's avoidable, I think would be something to do, and, and not have a tunnel entrance. You know, for years, I was an advocate for a three-lane reversible bridge on the current alignment. And, um, through conversations with community and other stakeholders, I, I recognize that there might be a, a greater desire now than ever for a second bridge, emergency egress and such. So, um, you know, I'm trying to support my community, and that's why I love this being a community dialogue. Because I really would like this to be directed by what fits the community. I, I think that we have opportunity to address some of the concerns around the preferred alternative and maybe get to something that, uh, a majority of our community can accept, uh, and support. Hopefully, that's not just in the fifties, but maybe a sixty percent, support for the, a solution. Uh, I'll just, uh, state one other thing. A- as Bill pointed out, you know, uh, the goals and priorities, Cemetery Lane and McLean Flats traffic, um, through the PA that's put in front of us, that traffic has to come in through the S-curves to get to the traffic light, to take a right to get out of town. And I, I just don't think that's necessary. I think Cemetery Lane, through a, a modified split shot, can have the opportunity to go down valley or in town, um, at that, at that intersection. So again, community character is really my number one priority. And that includes the connectivity that I just mentioned around Cemetery Lane. Bringing the community together on future steps, I think, is important. And I just see the preferred alternative a- as the iterations we have now have a couple flaws that people would like to look for alternatives to. Including the appropriate stakeholders, I, I agree that this, for the most part, should be a, a Upper Valley or Picking County, um, kind of discussion. Picking County, City of Aspen, uh, Town of Snowmass, and mostly because of our shared winter commutes, um, as well as summer. But our shared winter commute and skier traffic, um, it does go through this on a daily basis, this section on a daily basis. So my, I, I don't have any problem taking input and listening to down valley, um, residents and commuters as far away as parachute rifle, Grand Junction, if you want to. I, I just think that it's important that they understand the real scope of this project. And like I said, um, you know, for anybody that is commuting, for them to think that one of these over the other is going to improve their commute times, noticeably, I, I just don't think is, is, um, representative of really the scope of what this project can address. That being said, I think that the roundabout should be looked at. What a, w- what a great job for handling what it handles right now. The design of it is so great for what we have right now. But I think it was constrained by a little bit of, uh, maybe water treatment or wetlands that are right there in the open space. And, um, I think that the roundabout could use some treatment and either expand. I, I don't know how to design roundabouts, but, you know, you've got Maroon Creek and Castle Creek coming in there. It's, it's a difficult roundabout, but I think there's some improvements that can be done there. But if you look further down the road, um, as John was saying, a, a valley-wide commute shows you many different pinch points and many different areas that could be improved, perhaps. Again, number one, uh, priority there is about mass transit and trying to get more single occupant vehicles off the road, um, just to make it better conditions for everybody. I think that's about it. I, I want to stick to just answering the questions. I guess my last comment is that, you know, it's interesting, it was, we were talking about the, um, purpose and need. It's difficult for me because, like I said, where I'm at right now is looking at a community that is looking to improve on what's been put in front of us, that being the preferred alternative. So going back to purpose and need, I don't, I don't know how that relates to new alternatives, right? Because we're sitting here reactionary. We're not sitting here with a clean slate going, hey, how can we improve this? Well, you know what our purpose is, and you know what our need is. We're now looking at change to what was identified thirty years plus ago. And so it's a little hard to pinpoint purpose and need. For me right now, the purpose and need is to get a better alternative than the one that has been accepted in the record of decision and modified over the last decades. So I hope all that makes sense to you. I am not, uh, as I advocate modified split shot, I am really advocating for community. I want, I, I want this community to understand what these options To understand what these options entail and make decisions, um, for the best of the community. That's, that's really what I support. Additional comment?
Uh, just one thing real quick of, uh, could you email us so we can email you back the notes that we said to make sure you got them? And then the other thing, I don't know how much you might need from us as far as an argument why a new EIS is necessary. But one more thought that came to mind when Tori was talking was, um. That intersection at Seventh and Main has changed a ton. The amount of like the affordable housing that's gone in there, the trees that have gone in there. It does not look the same at all as it did back in nineteen ninety-eight as, uh, demonstrated to me by photos from, uh, residents that live nearby. So. Almost, it feels like almost nothing is the same decades later from a process they did. So just. If you need more, please, uh, encourage more to make that argument. Thank you.
Mayor Tori, can I, um, I, just to respond to one of your comments, um. I realize it's been studied to, these solutions have been talked about and studied so much that. Going back and taking a fresh look and doing a new EIS might seem, um. Like it's hard to get your arms around. We did make, city staff made a run at. Looking at, for example, a modified split shot through a supplemental EIS process. That was a question that city posed to CDOT and FHWA. And, uh, we, we know what their answer was. That no, it would require a new EIS. And this is, you know, it's that and some of the other alternatives that the council has expressed interest in. Like a three-lane old bridge alternative is why really we're, we're here talking about a pre-NIPA process. I appreciate that. And, and, and I. It'd be nice if there was a truncated process that we could maybe get some exploration on some other ideas, but. You know, dealing with, uh, FHWA and CDOT, I mean, they can't have processes that are truncated. Because they, there's too many boxes to check. And so I, I know that we're all. On board. We get it. We know that it's going to cost us money. We know that it's going to cost us time. The good news is we have some time, right? The, the latest bridge evaluation that came out said, hey. From what we see right now, you should be good for the next couple of cycles. That's four years plus. So, so we have some time right now. I, I had a opportunity to, uh, speak with, uh, Shashana Liu, right? The CDOT director. Um, and, uh, we had a great exchange, just sharing with her that we understand that there's a process and. And we're ready to get in it and, um, we want the best outcome for our community. You know, my hope is that the, the process that we're embarking on is, um, as fair and balanced. And evaluative as it's presented to us because it seems extremely thorough. And if it is that thorough, then I have a lot of confidence that we're going to come out with some recommendations at least. That, that reflect, um, great community input as well as great technical study. So. And from her part, um, she did share along the lines of what Sam was talking about earlier about reevaluations of rods and stuff. She shared to me that they were completely understanding that we would like to take another look at it. And that they didn't have any ill feelings about that, that they understood that and, um, look forward to just getting into the process. So.
Yeah, just, I want to be clear on the, the timeline and the process that, um. The first step is, uh, public and stakeholder, um, engagement. Uh, followed by defining what the purpose and need is. Uh, and then presenting that need for a new EIS to FHWA and CDOT. And then if, uh, if they accept that a new EIS is needed, then following that, we'd be looking at a fresh look at alternatives and solutions. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other presentation or information from us this evening? Any questions unanswered?
If you want to send me those emails, um, I'm happy to compile them and, uh, get that to Jacob. So if you've got. Uh, that all ready, I will take it and we'll make sure that, um, everybody on the Jacob's team gets it.
Our comments?
Your comments. Uh, Councilor Rose was just mentioning he's got an email and we can take the one from, um, Councilor Guth as well.
Sounds good. What is the potential or where are we with getting some refinement on the? A little bit more work done on the modified split shot rendition?
So we don't currently have direction related to that. So if, um, that's the desire of council, happy to take a look at it and see what a, a scope modification. Would be to have some additional work done there. Um, I will say that as. We're moving into a process where we're going to be looking at lots of alternatives. I mean, I think all of those kind of components of a modified split shot would be. Something that could be part of those reasonable alternatives that are considered during an EIS. Um, so would be further developed in that process.
I'm okay with that. I just think that, um, to this point, it has had the least amount of work and the refinement and that survey that went out. It was the one that had the like unknowns and variables that weren't defined. So I would ask my fellow council members if it could be, at least be taken to clarify those final design pieces.
I would, I would go through the process and at, uh, stage four, step four of, uh. A new EIS is determined to be, um, needed that we look at, uh, uh, the. Modified, um, split shot at that point where we look at all the alternatives. And I think. What I got from your presentation was is that we, what we need to do is look at what the purposes and needs are, not at. Advancing particular solutions. So I would, uh, I support going through the public, uh, and stakeholder. Engagement, doing, uh, defining of the purpose and need, um, going through that process that, uh. Presenting it to, um, FHWA and, um, CDOT. And if they determine that a new EIS is warranted. That we start that and at that point we spend more time on, um, uh, different alternatives.
I, I appreciate that, but you know, it's, I. I disagree, um.
Oh, no, you're, you're lobbying for your position.
I, I, I think that, I think that information about all of them should be out. Um, and it was a shame that it wasn't, uh, a little bit more finished for the survey and stuff, but, um. But it's okay, Ward, because like even the preferred alternative, and this is what I'm saying, is the preferred alternative as it's been rendered and shown. As of recent. Has some. Design, um, I don't know what you'd call them, additions, errors, non-deletions, unedited edits. I don't know. Um, other council members, there's two others over here. Do you care to see the, at least the rendering finished out? With the intersection at Cemetery Lane, it's, and removing the light at Seventh. I'm not asking for a lot, but. Good.
Wait for John to go first.
Go ahead, Sam.
No, no need. You can say nothing if you want.
No, I, I, I mean, uh, I think Ward makes a valid point, especially since something, nothing can be predetermined. But I also agree with you, Tori, that, um. The modified split shot, um, I've seen different renditions of. I've seen it with a roundabout at Cemetery Lane. I've seen it with a slip lane back. And I have to imagine if there is a need for a second bridge. That is the greatest form of compromise and the greatest positive with a second bridge and, uh. One of its renditions, and I was very disappointed in how it was presented in the survey. So. I'm happy to support what you're saying. I just, um. Also really want to recognize what Ward said that these can't be predetermined. So we can. Put forward a nice looking, uh, modified split shot, but it only means so much when you can't predetermine the EIS.
I agree. I agree.
As I've said all along, we need a second bridge. Uh, I think the community deserves to see the choices between. The two options that, that bring us a second bridge. Um. I also agree with what Ward said, but yeah, if we can flesh out the design a little bit to. Show the community what's at stake. I'll support that.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know how to get more detailed about it. I'm just asking for finish out on the Cemetery Lane intersection. And to take a look at the Seventh and Main light on the modified split shot. That's all.
So the, the ones that are more defined have had lots and lots of evaluation from Jacobs. Some of those things that had, weren't identified were things that hadn't yet been studied and each of those individual. Components would be probably its own alternative. So, uh, you know, one that has roundabout would be an alternative and one that has. A slip lane has, it would be an alternative. And so all, and that's why there are forty-some alternatives in the original. Certainly happy to, to provide a, a more detailed drawing. I will just say that the, the other three had, um, the engineering to understand how they function.
That's cool. You, you know what? I mean, Jen, to be honest, I could cut and paste it with paper. If I could get an hour of staff time to help me, um, run the Xerox machine, I'll just do it. Like I, I, it doesn't need to be involved. I don't need the all four or five different alternatives. I just think something that, um, has a little less cloud around it than what we've put out there so far. So, um. I'll work with you and we can just get it done. It shouldn't take but a little bit. If you can help.
Does this body want to see it again before it's decided? Because I think, um, there are some components of that that are. You know, each one has its own impact on another component of that drawing. So happy to bring it back and, um, have you blessed it.
Something, I don't know. It's just a little bit more work could be done to un-cloud that, that one example, but. We'll work on it. These guys supported it. We don't need a supplemental request. We don't need a budget request. We don't need a scope request. We'll just get there.
I do appreciate what you're saying, though. It's not as simple as just possibly one.
And certainly we can have the, that drawing amended, certainly. I think, you know, there are different components of choices that related to the light, related to the intersection type. So. Happy to, to refine it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just comment. I think it's putting the carton head on the horse. I think we need to go through the process.
I appreciate that. Um, I could say a, a few words about a ballot question that's coming up, but, um, I'm not gonna. Any other questions or clarifications from you guys? Thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate working with you and this, um. Let's see, may not be the funnest ride in the amusement park, but it's, you'll get your thrills. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You too.
Happy holidays.
Next item up, we have to have a quick conversation about, um, membership clubs in Aspen. Take just one minute to switch over. No, no, they're just going for a quick quote. He'll be back. Ben, next item for us?
Yes, please. Mister Mayor and Council, uh, for the record, Ben Anderson, Community Development Director. Shockingly, I have no slides, um, to share with you this evening. This is maybe a quick conversation, um, but might warrant some discussion. Where staff is bringing this topic to city council for your consideration. Because we're getting more requests for these types of, of, uh, uses within our, our commercial core particularly. As I described in the memo, you know, I intentionally didn't use names. Of different organizations because I, you know, we're a small town and lots of folks are involved with these and, you know, I, I think also per the staff memo. We're fairly agnostic about this question, but staff, because of things that are in the land use code are often put in a difficult. Position and don't have clarity about how to respond to different concepts that are coming our way. And again, this is a topic that increasingly we're being asked questions to respond to. Um, as folks, um, think about new concepts to bring, uh, to Aspen. Really at the crux of the matter is in our use categories, um, we have a phrase open to the general public. That is present, um, for all of our commercial uses, whether they be an office use or a service use or a restaurant. Um, and I think that that was added intentionally, um, in response to, um, long existing private clubs. We know that we have a couple of fraternal organizations that are in our, uh, commercial zone districts. We also have a couple of longstanding clubs that are fairly exclusive, um, both in terms of their cost and, and membership criteria. We have considered those as non-conforming uses, um, in light of this language and, you know, the way that we have handled this at the staff level. Is for those existing uses, we've given pretty clear direction that those uses could not expand. They could continue to exist, but could not expand. And then for new folks that came in asking us about different concepts around memberships. Parallel to the way that we would respond to a, an athletic club or a member, uh, a workout club. We've asked that new membership-based clubs. Have a day use availability so that someone could just walk up and, um. Gain access to the space by paying, paying a fee. And we've never really made any determination about what that fee could be or, or it's not really a question about affordability. Yeah, it's, it's simply been about being able to do that.
Uh, I just wanted to chime in, be like, could someone charge a million dollars for a day? Cause I was just like, it seems like a rec, like a. Rule that doesn't make sense if that's the case.
I, I think a million is actually the two-day pass.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just saying like, you're like, okay, you have to do a day use pass and you're like, great, it's a million dollars and nobody takes it. So thanks for forcing me to do that. That's all. So.
I, I, I think it's a fair question. I think it, it, that type of question illustrates why this is a difficult topic for staff when, when people come to us. With these types of, types of requests. Um, so anyway, I, I think that there's, there's potentially two responses here. One, you know, please, if you want to have questions about the, 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 the day passes as the criteria, we can certainly talk further about that. But I think. Staff sees two paths in dealing with this, just to bring clarity to, um, staff's efforts to make sure that we're responding consistently to these requests as one. To either begin to enforce on either new or proposed clubs. That don't offer a day pass option. Or, and this might be the more holistic response, um, and, and certainly be an alternative to enforcement is to direct staff to. Pursue land use code changes that create private clubs, uh, as an allowed use, as a distinct use from other uses. Um, and to give limitations and, and, and regulation to that use as we do to, to other types of uses in our, in our commercial zone. So. I'm happy to discuss any further, um, details of this, but essentially that's the question that we have for you this evening and. Really, again, the, the impetus for this discussion this evening is that we've. Had folks bring to our attention, um, some existing and, and some proposed new clubs. And, and certainly this, this topic is something that staff is increasingly responding to with, with folks that, that are, are bringing new concepts to town.
Thanks, Ben. Um, obviously in the memo, you guys, there are two questions that kind of, uh. Get to the heart of this. Um, Ben, for. This sounds almost temporary in this approach. I have a, a question for you about, um. Is there an opportunity in the land use code to require some public aspect? Like, i- i- like instead of saying you have to have a day pass, uh. There are, there are places in town where there is a restaurant that is open to the general public. Through and through on the ground floor. And then the second floor is, uh, the private member club. Um, or perhaps rented out for private parties and the, and the like. I- is that an opportunity for us where if we, you know. I- i- if there was a component similar to a day pass, if there was a component to an actual building. Or a business that has a public component, like is that another way that we could address this?
You know, certainly. I think there's lots of ways to address it. Um, I mean ironically. You know, back in twenty seventeen, we created something called second tier space, uh, to generate sort of commercial vitality or, or try to sort of bring more of that to town. You know, and those are often second floor, third floor spaces and basement spaces. And, you know, in some of the recent concepts we've seen, there, those exact same spaces where, um. So again, I think that. So again, I think that we, we certainly could do that. I, I would say that most of these are in spaces that are not sort of prime commercial spaces. Their second floors, their basement spaces, their, you know, alternatives. So, you know, I think there's lots of space that we, you know, we have to, to try to define these things. Right now, and I guess this is the point, all that we have in the code that requires staff then to do our own interpretation about how to sort of apply this is it, it simply says open to the general public regardless of the, the kind of pieces of it or parts of it that may or may not be open to the public at different times.
Okay. I, I'll go ahead and just kick the conversation off, share my point of view. For me, the, 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 the big picture, I do have a concern that, you know, with a small town that we have, a small commercial core that we have, the privatization of more and more space limits, access, and, and the enjoyment by our, not just our residents, but our visitors as well. So I do, I would love to see this addressed in some way. I would hate to see us get ten or twenty years down the road and realize that, you know, some thirty to fifty percent of our commercial space is being utilized for private uses. So I, the big picture, yes, I do want to address this in some way. For right now, I would make it simple on everybody and just say that they have to have a day pass offering. I, with respect to Sam's comment, we talked about this earlier, yeah, they, they definitely could. They definitely could put some astronomical price on it and make it really unavailable. But I don't necessarily think that that's, I don't know that that's the business climate or the real intention here. Maybe it would be expensive, but not out of reach. So I think our, for me, the simple thing here is, yeah, a, a day pass for these privatized spaces would, would be great. But long-term, I think we should look at it in the land use code. Not to clearly acknowledge and define, but see how they work into our development pattern. Anyway, that just kicks off the conversation. I'll go John and then Sam.
Yeah, I'm glad this was brought forward to us. I really appreciate this. We've all heard the stories of billionaires rubbing elbows with ski bumps at the Hotel Drone Bar. I've lived that actually. And that's, that's an anecdote that's always been referred to with pride here in Aspen, that we, we mingle together. And then walls started appearing. I think for me personally, the first one was, I'll name names, the Caribou Club. And then nineteen ninety-nine, when the Sun Duck was redeveloped, we found ourselves faced with the Aspen Mountain Club, which has a pretty high membership fee. Most of these clubs do. And these will separate us as citizens. As, and as more requests come in for spaces in the core especially, doesn't that drain our downtown of locals and local businesses? I, I see if this continues, I can see a future where downtown could be potentially off limits to locals. Hollowing out our community even more. And that's for locals and visitors as well. So, yes, I think a day pass is super important to be available. And I would like to address this before we find our, our spaces dominated by clubs that are off limits to the average person.
Thank you. Sam?
Yeah, with the, um, obviously it's not great to be excluded from things that you want to do. But that's kind of just the world we live in in many ways. Here, if you talk about enforcing having, people having a day pass, but you expect it not to be astronomical. Say we didn't regulate it. If they wanted to have a day pass, they would. And if they wanted people to actually go with that day pass, they'd make it a price where people could afford it. But if we want to be just virtue signaling up here and requiring a day pass, but not requiring any price for it, then we legit are just virtue signaling because we're not accomplishing anything if they could charge a million dollars for a day pass, so. I do think policy is very complex because the membership clubs that we talk about in this town are definitely not one size fits all. And unless you can come up with a nuanced policy, which I think would be very difficult, my choice would be not enforce and create a new use category within the land use code that describes membership-based clubs and provides allowances and limitations specific to their use. Basically your second choice, cause doing the first choice to me really is just virtue signaling.
Sometimes you have to cert, you have to signal your virtues, you know?
Yeah, I just, I like value signaling and I like accomplishing what I set out to do. I mean, po- policy is difficult.
So can you, can you, do you have any alternatives there to, to make those, to make that more effective? You could, for example, if you wanted to, you could divide a private membership into a day pass. Or, I mean, you could maybe put restrictions around it, and I'll just leave that with you. I, I'm, I'm looking for your input. I'd love to know how you would see that, making that better.
I, I very much admit it's difficult. Like I said, it's, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. The membership clubs here are very different. What John mentioned, the Aspen Mountain Club, the, the Caribou Club, and let's throw in like the Elks. Those are wildly different three membership clubs in town. And trying to create one policy for all three, let alone all the other ones that go on here is very difficult. And like I said, requiring a day pass for a, a membership club that doesn't want a day pass, why would they make it affordable? They don't want to do it anyway.
Do we have the ability to separate types of clubs, service clubs and, and the like?
I really didn't want to get into certain legal questions involving this proposed, these proposed alternatives. I would note that there are federal tax, there are federal laws that do, particularly tax laws, that do implicate how these things may be distinguished. And things such as fraternal organizations that do provide, are considered service clubs do fall within those distinct areas. So it's kind of a non-answer answer, but perhaps is the answer.
Yeah, I, I would think so. A tax status for sure, I think would be some.
It does have an implication.
Ward, input?
Yeah, this is difficult for me. Since recorded history, there's been economic and social stratification. And I, I personally feel that our community in this world would be better off if we were all treated the same. But that's never been the case throughout recorded history. I think that increasing the number of private clubs is kind of counterintuitive to building community. But I question if city council or government is the place that this should be addressed. I don't know that, I don't know what the current prog, established progressive enforcement policy is. So before I go into more depth on it, it, it seems as though that it's not transparent what some of these clubs are doing and that there's a, an established progressive enforcement policy, which I have no idea what that is.
That's simply a statement that describes how we enforce on anything, where our, our first step is to have a conversation. You know, see if we can find an, an agreed upon solution. And then we go through a very established chain of events. Depending on the response of, of the, the person who's, who's, who we're having a conversation with. There becomes a formal notice, a formal letter. It can go all the way to municipal court. Ultimately, if, if there's not an appropriate response to the, to the, to the complaint that was made.
So what, what you're suggesting perhaps is that the two established clubs, and I think Acosta Tua and Caribou Club that have, don't have day passes available, that they would be grandfathered in. And any new ones would have to fall under a different set of rules.
I, I won't name names, but I do think that I wouldn't necessarily agree with the, the categorization of the two clubs that you just mentioned. I think there's a timing issue. Certainly since it's already been mentioned, Caribou Club, I think is one of the, the clubs we mentioned here that have been around for a very long time, that I think predate the sort of inclusion of the general public provisions within our use categories. So they would not be a, a topic of progressive enforcement. But I do think again, we've, we've got a couple more recent examples, one existing and one proposed that we know about and certainly we get, we get, I would say we get an inquiry six or ten times a year about different concepts and how it might work in different spaces.
Yeah, I, I, I personally would, you know, if any new, new club is established in any existing club needs to abide by the diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging policies of the city of Aspen, that there be no discrimination based on race, ethnicity, religion, national origin, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, citizen status, education, disability and social economic status. That everybody is eligible to be a member of an exclusive club. But I, I like the idea of having certainty instead of having some non-conforming users, that we would go through a more extensive process of a, a land use code change to make them all conforming. And, you know, that's a three-step process, policy resolution, first reading, second reading. During that time, we could have a full discussion and weighing out of what these pressures are. But my, my biggest quandary is that it's a, it's private property. And the, the government telling you what you can do with your private property is, it's a challenge for me. That if everybody's treated the same, then you change the land use code so that everybody has the same and there are no non-conforming uses and then conforming uses. And I think the process of having a, editing the land use code would give a more full discussion of the, the pressures that exist in this issue.
So when it comes to a day pass or no day pass?
Yeah, I,
Would you like to do in the interim?
Well, I don't know about day passes, where they are being used, what the prices are. You know, you could, you could say, yeah, here's your day passes. Oh, by the way, it's the same as an annual pass. So I don't see that it's, in some of the, some of the clubs have the same available menu. And that's fully available to the public in a downstairs area. So I, I'm not going to opine on a day pass because I don't know. Previous councils tried to set the price of a hamburger.
Yeah. I, I will say, you know, I don't think any of us have any illusions of where we work and live. This is an expensive place. You know, I think depending on the price of different amenities that are being offered downtown, I mean, there's, there's spaces that I think we perhaps self-select about not going into or not depending on the price that we assume the, the goods are within those spaces. I do think that what separates this and why staff does have some concern related to the open to the general public language is that, to our understanding, the ability to enter these spaces is dependent on some, a, a person's kind of applying ahead of time before going into the space, being vetted, being selected under criteria, I think to your, to your question about exclusivity and, and the grounds for that exclusivity, what those are. And so I think that's the uncertainty that staff has on a couple of the examples that, that, that we've come across lately. So I, I get the, I get all of your points, Ward, and I think it's a difficult thing to, to regulate, to administer, to, to kind of respond to, but I, I think that that's where this, this, this topic came, came to staff's attention certainly as, as we receive more inquiries about this.
Yeah, and, and just to add one more thing, that the, the day passes have criteria that aren't transparent. So if you're going to have a availability of a tape pass, the, the process has to be totally transparent, I think. So if we, if we do make day passes available, I want that, you know, that criteria, as you say, it's, do not seem to be transparent. Like, if we do go with a day pass, to make it fully open and transparent.
So, to be clear, the current code is that there is a requirement for day pass?
It's a requirement that it's open for the public.
Open to the public.
The use of the day pass is a method of assuring that it's open to the public. You know, that gets, that's the nuance that, that's Sam's, or that you're all referring to is that, well, a day pass that's a million dollars a day, is that really open to the public? And that's the, the issue that we confront. What we recommend, one way or another, I think, is to, to review this. What I recommend is to review it and adopt, legislate what you want to either remove the restriction or address the restriction a little more carefully.
Yeah. To, to be clear, the application of the idea of a day pass is a method that staff utilized to, to allow membership-based organizations, whether they be Jean Robert's Health Club, to name names, or a social or an entertainment club. The day pass was simply a mechanism to allow compliance with that, that concept of the general, open to the general public. That is not something that's specified in the land use code, to be clear.
Right, but you're operating under that.
Yes.
Right. I, I was just pointing that because Ward was saying like, if we want to do this, but that is what we're doing.
Currently, that's the way staff.
That is what we're doing. We're, we are doing the, the day pass to allow the, the, the membership-based clubs. We, that's what we're doing.
Where are the day passes being utilized and what are the prices?
I do not know. The only, the only example that I can utilize or that I can use is in, as a, a concept that's no longer with us at Here House, which was adjacent to Locals Coffee House, where there was a membership in a larger kind of network of similar type clubs across the country. The full memberships were, were not, were not super low cost. But I think to gain access to that space during the day was thirty or forty dollars. Which, again, the price is, is less relevant than the fact that it was there and it was transparent. You know, I, I think there's a recent club that was very recently in the newspaper that has, you know, availability of a day pass to their space. I do not know what the cost is of that day pass. But that has been the kind of threshold question when people have come to us asking about these concepts is, is there a, you know, widely available day pass if somebody just walks up to the door and wants to gain access?
I just want to reject too and say like, we have no idea what these clubs, once again, it's so nuanced, what their business plans are. I mean, they could offer day passes and their club could be full. You have no idea. You have no idea how like the economics of the place work. So like, once again, if they wanted to offer day passes, they would.
But that's, but that's not, the, the question before us isn't about their business and about their model. The question before us is about whether the privatization of downtown commercial space is something that we have concern with, right? So it, it,
No, I, I, I understand.
Right.
I understand we have, we have a problem. I'm just saying, the day pass does not make any sense to me as a requirement solution for that problem.
We have a lot of problems with downtown core and we can't, we can't set rent controls.
Congrats. Anyone can walk into Gucci. Not anyone can afford to buy a Gucci. What are we going to do as a council? Make sure that there's one affordable item?
No.
A pass version of Gucci?
No.
I mean, these are, this is just a
No.
Regulation that doesn't make sense to me.
But that's, that's not the question that's being asked. It's a simple question.
And, and, and if the regulation doesn't make sense to you, I'm, I'm asking you again, the principle. It's about, so, so yes, so maybe we don't have a good solution right now. We're just trying to find out if this is an item that we want to address. That's, that's, that's the crux of the question. Is this an item that you want to address? Not whether or not the day pass gets it done or not. Again, it's not in our land use code. It is what we've been following to accommodate and to work with. So we're just trying to figure out if this is, if it's not a concern of councils, then we don't need to worry about it. We're just asking if it's, if it's something that's a concern.
No, I'm just saying, don't insult me with. No, I'm just saying, don't insult me with uh, not knowing the question. Option one literally says that do not offer a day pass option. That's, that's why I'm addressing the day pass is like a. Very important aspect of this conversation. And uh, just before we do finish up, um, I did, since you did for um, the ETA, I was hoping I could just read Bill's comments for this and he saw the email.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to him as well, but yes. So, so Ward, the day pass is something that they're doing right now.
But it's not in the code.
It's not in the code.
So. And that it's a logical interpretation of what is open to the general public. Now, whether it.
Yes.
Whether it drifts into a logical position, I can't answer, but it is a logical interpretation of what is, when something is open to the general public, which is the requirement.
And, and I, I can support a day pass if we know what it is and, and if there's some definition to it, that it's not just a. You know, th- we're doing this, but we don't have any policy for it.
Uh, understand. What I'm asking you and Sam both about here is, let, let's think. They're, they're coming to us with a situation. They're asking for some guidance here. So, so I'm saying, if the day, I get that the, the, the day pass isn't perfect and it does, and you want more transparency, I, I get it, I get it. If, i- if that is our interim or temporary solution here, is there something? Again, just the big question is, is this, is this something that you want to be concerned about or thinking about? The privatization of, of downtown space? I don't know what the solution is to make it available to the public, or I know what the solution is to not make it to the available pub, available to the public. Anyway, so that I'm just trying to get your, where are you, where are you? Yes, maybe the day pass isn't the solution you want, but do you want any approach on this? That's the question.
Well, I, I think this falls kind of into the uh, death by a thousand cuts. If you don't do anything and it just keeps creeping and creeping, if you take a better, uh, more defined approach, set it either uh, through the process of. A policy resolution and changing the land, land use code, we determine if there's support for it. There'll be, there would be a public hearing. There would be public input. There would be. Um, the ability to weigh in on this. Um, I, I can certainly see that if, if it goes unchecked, that there'd be more and more clubs where only. Privileged people have access to it. But. I, I think it's something that should be addressed more fully.
But, but addressed nonetheless. Thank you. That's, that, yes, okay. John?
Uh, it seems to me, it's not really an issue just yet. This has just been brought before us to, to say that it's on the horizon and we need to be thinking about it.
And, and also to give some direction to staff about how you would like us to handle this situation.
Exactly.
Because currently, we're operating in a gray area and we. Are trying to be true to the land use code. While also being accommodating to different business concepts that are coming to town. While also making sure that we're um, not getting out um, over our skis and going too far and responding to. Some very basic language in the land use code, which is open to the general public and what that means. And so, you know, I think from staff's perspective, what, what that phrase means is that it's simply anybody can walk in and gain access to that space. It might be expensive once you get there. Um, you can walk into Gucci. You might not be able to walk it out with anything, but you can walk into the space. Um, and there are spaces increasingly and concepts that are being proposed. That would make more of our spaces so that more people could not walk into them and gain access to them, regardless of the cost of once you're in there. So I, I think that that's ultimately the, the, the question that staff is, is getting at, is that we are sitting in a. Space where we've got limited tools in the land use code. We're trying to respond to what we think the community's intent was in putting that language in the land use code. And um, you know, it's not an easy conversation to have with people. I don't know that there's a lot of communities that have been thoughtful about this topic and have been concerned about this topic. And so when folks come to us from elsewhere, where this is not a topic of concern, they're often surprised by staff's position on this. And so, or even that it's a topic of conversation. And so, you know, I'm, staff, staff has been operating under a, a common understanding of this and how to deal with it for some time. Um, the concepts are becoming more um, sophisticated. And there's more requests coming. And so that's, again, the impetus of the conversation this evening. But I get the, the concerns about day passes and we've had those same questions.
Uh, hang, hang on. So, so just uh, so Bill, our missing fifth member, um, he was not in favor of day passes. He's not in favor of regulation in this space. Um, you know, he, the free market and looking at this as an opportunity for people to bring other concepts or what have you to town. So he, he's not supportive of not just the day pass concept, but he doesn't really. Doesn't think that we should step into regulating um, private clubs or membership-based clubs either. John?
Okay, just to distill it down, um. I am against more walls going up between members of our community and our visitors. Let me just say that. Uh, apparently, we need to refine our approach to this and I support staff moving forward with refinements to. This approach.
Can I say that it sounds like that's option two for the majority of council, to bring a new use category within the land use code? Uh, I, I just wanna ask, is that what you've heard? Cuz that's what I've heard and I don't wanna be wrong about it. Cuz I mean, he presented two options. I just wanna say option two, so we all can be clear what option we're talking about, because this has gone awry.
Yeah, I, I, I think if we were to pursue option two, I would not pursue option one. And we would come back with definition, um, that, that gives additional definition, whether it's to more clarity around a, a day pass, if that's um, what we're pursuing. Or, you know, some other set of limitations that, um, this council or future council would have some options about what, what those kinds of regulations and limitations may be. Um, but if, if it is, if the majority is to pursue option number two, I will just say that staff would not um, likely be taking um, enforcement action. Um, sort of on anybody at, at, at this time.
Understood.
Right, so we can make this real quick. My vote is that you continue along what you're doing with requiring the day pass. It's not perfect, but it is something that, that virtue signals.
Understood.
And I'm happy about it, while pursuing option two.
Yeah, I'm just option two, but I just want the rest of the council to say, cuz.
Good.
Bill is clearly option two. I feel like Ward was option two, but I don't wanna put words in your mouth just because I thought you wanted to go through the land use process. But I just want clarity so we can.
We're getting there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I support option two because I think it, it requires a deeper dive. It, it's a complex and I think that we shouldn't, we should uh. Fully explore what other communities are doing, what the options are, um, what the implications are of day passes. If we have day, I think if we do a new land use code, we can either decide, we're not gonna do anything, we're back to option one, or we decide that we're gonna have. Day use, uh, well-defined categories, the co- even, you can get as uh, far into the minutia of what you wanna demand, but. Um, I, I support doing a full dive on it.
Sure. And do you wanna keep the status quo of what they're doing now with the day pass? And it's, I mean, it's not even a requirement. It's.
Suggested.
Again. Has to be open to the public.
You have a majority for option two.
Sam, just settle down, man. Just settle down one second, will you?
The current law is it has to be open to the public. We're recognizing that day passes are, like I said earlier, a logical extension of that.
Understood. So cur- under current land use code, they're supposed to be open to the public? Period.
So I'd leave, I'd leave what's in place, in place until we do a deep dive on it.
Boom.
There you go. Thank you. John, are you there?
Yeah, baby.
Gotcha. It's one, 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 one with two, two, two and two.
I'm just excited for some clarity.
Good.
That's all good.
Got it. Cool. I, I, I hope, I hope that makes sense. I mean, again, that's why I was trying to say at a high level policy is like, yes, or do we have? Concern? Yeah. How do we get there or address it? I don't think we know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our work session for this evening. We appreciate you very much. Uh, grassroots, we love you and keep in mind that tomorrow we have a regularly scheduled meeting and we take public comment at about five PM. Come and join us at City Hall. Thanks.